Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 20th School Committee Meeting. And it will start off for us with any public participation. Anyone out there want to address the school committee? No one? Okay, thank you. Next, good news. Dr. Robitovich.
Yes, I have two pieces of good news. The first of which has to do with the award that the A.D. Makepeace Company will be receiving from the Masses Association of School Committees as the Outstanding Partner Award. Both the Superintendent of the Carver Public Schools and myself wrote letters recommending the Makepeace because of the grants that they have given over the years to our teachers in both communities. And we found out just last week that they were given the award. And at your seat, you will see the invitation by the Carver Public Schools. They're going to have a reception on Monday, May 9th at 6:30 PM at the Carver Middle High School Library. And the Superintendent in Carver wanted to make sure that all of the school committee in Wareham was invited as well because this is a recognition from both Carver and Wareham. So I think that is very good news. And once again, they have offered grants. And many of our teachers have applied for them. And in about another month, we'll find out who's received them. And during good news, I hope to read a number of awards received by our teachers. The second bit of good news is that there was a contest at the bullying training that Mass Aggression Reduction at Bridgewater State College had a contest. It was bullying awareness contest through the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, Mark. And the study skills teacher at the Minnet Forest, Christine Quimby, conducted the poem and poster contest during her scheduled class times. I am pleased to say we had several students who won an award. And they are invited to an awards ceremony at Bridgewater State on May 3rd. Fourth grade poems, honorable mention to Catherine Trappiano and Cecilia Chrismer. Fourth grade posters, honorable mention to Michaela Aroni and Janetta Montero. Fifth grade posters, second place to Ashley Atwood and Maya Poole. And honorable mentions to Kaylee De Colubus and Gabriel McKinnon. Most creative overall to Portia Luzon and Cayenne. Okay.
He's giving it to me. Cassalini?
Cassalini and Alex Scott. The poems and posters will be on display at the university until May 3rd. And then we will have the students bring them when they return and have a show perhaps at one of our upcoming school committee meetings. So that's my good news. Thank you.
Great. Good job on Scott's last name. Rachel?
Nothing.
Nothing? Jeff? All set, thank you. Dr. Sylvia?
All set.
Rhonda?
I do have something. I just want to mention as a piece of good news, the group that came to the Wareham Middle School and the Wareham High School, Rachel's Challenge, which took place a couple of weeks ago. There was a presentation and a training at the middle school, a presentation and a training at the high school, and then also a community-wide event. On this, if folks don't know, today is the 12th anniversary of Columbine. It was a very moving presentation. I'd love to hear, Jess, your take on it. But I know that myself and other parents that were there were, you know, it hit us pretty hard. But it was the story or the challenge that came after it, which was it was not just talking about a tragedy, it was about really inspiring kids to do what's right and to work with their other students and teachers. And it taught about respect. And it was just, it was a very, it was a great message to kids. And I think that the community event where, you know, we talked to the presenter and sometimes he has two or three, and sometimes he has thousands, we had a phenomenal turnout at the community event. So I just want to thank the parents and the community for taking part in that. And I really, you know, I hope that we just continue what this has started. But Jess, do you want to say?
I know, there was two presentations. One for the freshmen and sophomores, they went together. And then the juniors and seniors had the one right before lunch in the period. And I know for our presentation, and I heard from the underclassmen, that there really wasn't a dry eye in the house. I think it moved all of them because we knew of Columbine, but we hadn't really seen the effects of what had happened and really how big it was. And then we all were basically reminded of, what you said, like there are just common sense things of respect and how teenagers often usually just think about themselves. And it reminded us all again to think about the ones that you love and the ones who are in your life, and even the ones who have passed, and how meaningful they are to you. And how just being kind can help someone in such a small way.
Absolutely. So I just, I want to send just a big thanks out to the middle school PTA with Rhonda and Jamie, especially Chris Holbrook, who really brought this to the town of Wareham. You know, we just can't thank them enough. And I think through their efforts, it really touched a lot of people's lives. And I know that myself, I've probably spoken to at least one or two people about it every single day, about, you know, that you should really take a look at this, try to bring it to your community. So I'm very proud that this came to our town.
Well, that's great because I know a couple of the students that I ran into told me about it. And they pretty much said the same thing, that the kids were crying and very emotional about it. I was kind of upset that I missed it, I was out of town. And I even went to Google to see if the presentation was online. And there are some video clips of parts of Rachel's Challenge that was done at other schools in other areas. But everybody should be commended for that. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
That's great news. Good news, I just happened to see this in the newspaper. This Saturday, the townwide coastal cleanup is taking place. The Harbor Masters Department has announced the first ever Keep Wareham Beautiful Coastal Cleanup Day. Residents are invited to visit the onset pier and lend a hand Saturday, April 23rd from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And I believe they'll have assignments and provide gloves and things. The cleanup assignments will be throughout the town of Wareham. I'm going to try to make it down there. And if anybody else can, that would be great. So I think that's good news. And the other good news is I'm pleased that we have a chief of police. I think he's going to work hand in hand with the schools. We had some cuts with the loss of the resource officer, but hopefully the superintendent can work with the chief going forward and address some of those concerns next year to get that position or something similar back in the schools. So congratulations to Chief Stanley. Minutes of the April 6th meeting, if there are any corrections, additions to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All unanimous. Jessica, we have, under the request of Dr. Sylvia, moved you up in the agenda.
Thank you.
And I want to say after the, after you do your report, whether you have a report or not, feel free to leave at your convenience, whatever you want. And we appreciate you being here.
Okay. Thank you. And I think this past few days, you may have noticed, students aren't in school. We've had vacation, which I know I am thoroughly enjoying. I've heard from the fellow classmates in my class, junior class, that many are looking at colleges, going to see college visits, preparing for SCTs. And I think most others are just fooling around. So there's not really much to report.
Other than you're enjoying your vacation.
Very much so.
Very good. Mr. Swett?
Jessica, can you tell me the most important thing that is determining where our graduates go to college?
I think what they want to do, because I know personally I want to be a physical therapist, and only so many colleges offer majors or doctorates in that field. And then I think also location, how close they want to be or far from their family. And then I know cost is also a big one.
But it's interesting, you mentioned that third. So is that literally third in the issues that determine?
I think for most people, it's more of first.
It is more of a first.
Yes. Which is unfortunate.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Good.
Not much is going on this week in school.
Acceptance of a gift? Dr. Robitovich?
Just me one.
Yes, I have two. I believe you have one in your package.
So it's your gift?
And let's see. The first one is I recommend acceptance of a monetary gift of $1,000 from Lisa Rosini of the Paul A. Shaft Memorial Golf Tournament to the Minnet Forest Grade Five Year Book. So I'll take them separately.
Okay.
That would be okay.
A little acceptance.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're going to continue?
The second one I have is, let me read the letter. Jeff, that's okay, that I do that?
It's from both of us, is it?
Right, so.
Okay to?
And Rhonda, her okay too?
Yeah.
Okay. Dear Dr. Robitovich, in support of the education of the students of Wareham High School, and specifically the effort to increase the learning and engagement of those students through enhanced use of technology, we would like to donate two Apple iPad, two tablets. The value of these devices is $1,080.93, as indicated in the attached receipt. You will recall that this is the direct result of the initial FY 2012 budget discussions that we had with you, Janice Rattler and Scott Palladino. With this approval, we hope this is just the beginning of our support for a program to explore how technology can be used to better prepare our students for post-secondary education and professional opportunities that will allow them to become successful, independent, and productive adults. Signed sincerely, Jeff W. Swett and Rhonda Vegan.
Please.
Come on, how many other people can butcher it? Come on, keep going. Yougan.
Yougan.
You can always change the spelling.
I know, finemately, but I already talked to my husband about that.
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All unanimous?
Abstain.
Yeah.
Oh, I abstained, sorry.
To abstain.
I think we should abstain.
Thank you very much.
302.
We already know you approve anyway.
That's fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it for gifts, Dr.?
That's it for gifts.
Number six, amended school calendar, 2011, 2012.
Yes, now, I understand this calendar keeps coming up. And we passed it at the last school board meeting. But I was reminded by both the high school principal and the WEA president that the early release day on October 19th was inconvenient because we have a visit from the NIAC Accreditation Committee. They'll be at the high school, talking to students and so forth. So having a half day of school would not work on that day. So we have rescheduled that first early release day to September 21st. And everybody else is in agreement with that change. So I would ask you to amend the accepted calendar by changing the early release day to September 21st, 2011, instead of October 19th, 2011.
Motion?
I make a motion to accept the calendar with the change.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the school calendar as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions unanimous. FY 12 budget discussion.
Okay, I have a number of documents that I'd like to pass out to the committee. This is a revised, I added some slides. As you all know, you know, you make a presentation and then you have time to think about it and you add some things. So I've added a few slides. So we'll pass three this way and four this way.
Also disregard the one in that package.
Yes, that's right. I am also passing out to you. As you all know, there are many ways that we look at our budget. I'm going to pass out to you, if I can find it, the one-page version of the budget. So we're organized, we have all these numbers, and yet I can't find the one I want. Well, perhaps we'll pass out the four-page since I can't find the one-page. So we're going to go three that way and four this way. And this four-page is in the way that you normally see the budget updates by Anna. It has all the four-digit function numbers. And again, I'm sure I'll find the one-page at some point here. Okay. And I don't want to overcomplicate it, but for full disclosure, one, two, three. This is another document that's coming your way, which is generated out of Mr. Andrews' office by Derek Sullivan, the financial analyst.
We don't have this one already?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
He added a little something on the back. It becomes a two-page document instead of a single-page document.
You're right, we don't.
And I will, you know, you can refer to these documents as I do my PowerPoint. And I will go to the screen and do the PowerPoint now. Yes, we have the glasses on. No, Mr. Luzon tonight, right?
I gave him all the night off. It's a school vacation day. Ministers don't have vacation. On April 7th, I put this PowerPoint together after I finished my meeting with the town administrator to memorialize the agreement so that I could then chair the school board. I have already had a meeting with the ad hoc committee, one that Mr. Andrews was not able to attend. Two members of the board of selectmen, two members of the FINCOM, one member of the school committee, and myself were present, along with the financial analyst, Mr. Sullivan. And I went through this pretty much the way that you're going to see it, with the addition of a few slides that I've added.
Dr. Robitovich?
Yes.
Did you have a chance after the ad hoc to then still meet with the town administrator to go through this presentation again, or no? Or did you really leave that up to the financial analyst?
The financial analyst is the one that has given me that last document.
That reflected the?
Reflects the numbers. And they are in the budget document with the town as shared with FINCOM and TOT.
Okay, thanks.
This is one of the items that I've added, which is a timeline. If you recall, we began these conversations about the budget back, the principals had to give me their budget back in November. In December, we had budget meetings. By the January school committee meeting, we were already talking about what our budget request would be and voted on it. And I believe it was the end of January, and we gave it to the town administrator for February 1st. So when, what this shows is that after the town meeting in October, when our budget was cut by $822,000, that's the number that it went down to, is this $24,233,387. The town administrator then recommended, after looking at chapter 70 money and thinking that perhaps it would go down, he recommended a number that was a million dollars less. So in his first budget that he put together back in December of 2010, the number that he recommended was $23,215, which was close to $2 million less than what we had budgeted at, at April town meeting. In February, the town administrator then upped his recommendation by a small amount to $23,595. And that was, had we begun the ad hoc at that time?
I don't believe so.
No, I think it was just discussions between the town administrator and myself. Then we began the ad hoc process where we had the two members of each of the boards together to begin the discussions. And by March 29th, the number became $24,394. And that was after the town administrator was pretty sure that the chapter 70 number that the governor had released was going to really be the number. We were getting messages from the House that they were going to support the governor's number and perhaps even increase it a bit. Then we come to the agreement, which was on the 7th, this particular slide that was put together by, Derek Sullivan has the 15th, but $25,390,574. That is a number that we have agreed upon between the town administrator and myself. And I will get you to how we came to that number this evening. But I just kind of wanted to give a little historical because people have asked, you know, why the biggest frequency? How did we go from $4 million down to now a deficit of about $400,000? This was part of that process that we went through to get there. The budget, this was at April town meeting. Last April, 2010, we received, it was voted upon, $25,558,37. So if you take the number that we have agreed to, which is $25,390, let me rephrase that. The number that I would be recommending to you, that the town administrator and I have come to agree upon, not the school committee's number.
Good, Jeff.
Yes, Mr. Swett?
I realize it's a trivial sum, but my, being the numbers person that I am, why is there a, I don't know, $220 difference between the $25,397,94 and the $25,390, I think it was $574 on the previous page? Is there any significance to that disparity?
No, not in my mind. I don't know, I might have.
So you're going to pick up the $220?
Excuse me?
You're going to pick up the $220?
Absolutely. It's my problem.
Okay, good, okay.
So the difference between those numbers is $334,957, or a 1.3% increase. If we look at non-net, what we have agreed upon and what we were funded at last year, you see there is a difference of $106,263, or a down by 7.2%. The reason that we can do that is because any of the acquisition money, we had money in non-net that went to pay off a loan when we redid the carpenter buses about seven, eight years ago. That has been paid off, and therefore that money is now gone from that line item. And when I get to a slide on just non-net, I'll explain why I believe that that is enough money for us to live by. Now, if we take the same slide and we use different numbers, we use, if you recall, we were cut by $822,000. And we got back in free cash $415,000, which made a net difference of, I'm going to round, to $407,000. So this number that you see is after the cut of $822,000, and then if you add in the $407,000, that's how I came up with $24,648,837. If you subtract and from the number that we've agreed upon, that is $741,000 more, $957 more, or a 3% increase. So again, it depends on your perspective. And for full disclosure, I wanted to show it both ways.
Barry, if there's, I know on other presentations, we held questions to the end, but I think.
I don't mind if.
Right, I think because of what we're dealing with, any member wants to ask questions on the current slide, just be identified by the chair and we'll address the questions.
The one page that I couldn't find for you breaks down net school spending into approximately nine large categories. The 1,000 accounts, which is district leadership and administration, 2,000 accounts, instructional services, 3,000 accounts, student services, 4,000, operations and maintenance, 5,000, insurance, retirement, 6,000, leases, and 9,000 accounts are payments to other districts, special education costs, out of district costs. And what I have done is I showed what we had requested, and where the reduction was made to show that the reductions came from two areas. The 2,000 accounts, which are instructional services, that's where all the material, technology. that's where all the material, technology, requests, non-personnel items as well as some personnel items. When we have retirements and we took savings from that, that all comes from this 2,000 account. So there's an $887,798 savings there and there's another $380,000 savings from payments to other districts. How did we come up with $380,000 in savings to special ed costs? What we're doing is we're not, no longer will be, will be able to prepay. So at the end of the year, previous years, I've had money so that I can then go and pay for the summer programs and the first months of the program for next year. And that was basically an emergency account in case somebody came in, as we talked about it on school board meeting, with a placement for $160,000. Well, that's how we had the money to take care of that. That is now gone. So that we cut to, to use every penny that we had, that is now gone. And together, that's $1,267,798 of cuts.
Dr. Benavich?
Yes, the chairman.
Good. Dr. Benavich, wouldn't that, wouldn't that strategy tend to bite us next year?
Not to use your own words, Dr. Sylvia, but I believe you have said before that on occasion, if we don't have the funds, we'll have to go back to the town meeting and ask for them. And that's what we're going to have to do.
So because there is no more slush fund?
That's correct.
Okay.
So when you, if you go through that four-page document and I think in your package, you have the 25-page document and you went to the bottom line and then you took transportation, you subtracted the transportation number, you would come up with net school spending budgeted of $25,823,615. The number that the town administrator has agreed to bring us to is $25,39837, leaving a gap of $432,778. Those are actual numbers after Michelle put all of the savings, those anticipated savings that we had and made them actuals to come up with that gap.
Barry, so I'm seeing several different numbers with, I mean, I know that it's only $50 here or $200 here, but so in one document, this one here, it's $25,39794. Here is $837 on this reduced request, $615. So which...
Different people made the difference. That was put together by the town administrator's office. But that was the number that I agreed to with them and have some, and go to another piece of paper. So if it's a few dollars difference, you know, we'll come up with it one way or another.
Okay.
I realize that there are some discrepancies when you add up the numbers.
It's not millions, it's not even thousands, but it's just there. Okay.
Anything else on this particular slide?
Jeff? Are you going to be breaking down the $887?
Yes.
Thank you.
The $887...
$887,798 in instructional services.
Yes. Okay, the non-net. If we look at 210, we had $1,300,915 budgeted in that account. We spent an additional $80,000 that we had to make up using revolving accounts. So we used some of the money that was in the replacement of the motor vehicles and moved it into the transportation line item because they're both non-net and therefore I was able to move the money between them. And which brought us up to close to where we would have been not having a deficit. So we're $12,000 less than that and I'm confident that the money that we have in the revolving account currently and what will be coming in will take care of any anticipated deficit. And at the end of the meeting, under any other business, I will bring up an item that will allow us to save another $100,000 in transportation every year, which will make the deficit go by by. Yes, sir.
Good. To the best of your knowledge, are there, is the capital planning committee planning to recommend any purchases of buses to town meeting?
At October town meeting? I do not believe it will be at this town meeting. I've had this conversation with the town administrator and told him that it has to happen. And I've given him some strategies that perhaps will fly this time.
So it will not be in April?
No, sir.
But there is a plan for October?
Yes, sir.
Because for the fleet to age yet another year with zero buses being added is just asking for trouble. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Benavich, to follow up to that through you, can... Sorry.
Through the chair.
Through the chair. Sorry. Are there any capital items that are going to be recommended at this town meeting, do you know?
I am not sure that any are at this point because there was discussion that the... I believe it's the special town meeting is where free cash was being discussed and that has been changed. I haven't, I don't have a full answer to that at this point, I guess.
Thank you.
All right, to answer, to begin to answer some of the questions, where did the money come from? Where did the trimming come from? West Academy. As we talked about at the beginning, when we started West Academy, we talked about the potential for bringing in some revenue. In a revolving account, we have $110,000 that we have brought in for revenue from West Academy. I have applied $100,000 of that to our budget. So two positions no longer will be paid for through our budget, but will be paid for through that revolving account. That's savings of $100,000. We already discussed, but here you'll see special education tuitions, $380,000 trimming from not doing any pre-buying. And that would be in the 12, fiscal '12 year. We won't have any money for the pre-buy. Makepeace, each year, Makepeace has made a separate gift to the school department of $20,000 to support a position at the cooperative school. Last year, because of the way the budget was, we did not need the money. We allowed the money to stay in its revolving account. So this year, we have $40,000 to apply to that position, which is a savings of $40,000 in our budget for the FY '12 year. $55,000 remaining in edu jobs will be used to support a position within the budget. Savings from the replacement of retirees. We have two or three people at Minnetonka Forest that are retiring. They'll be replaced with younger, less expensive people. That's savings after we did it out to close to $50,000. The middle school had asked for $55,000 in technology requests. Yes, they need it, but can they wait another year? Yes. So again, trying to get to a bottom line and to show that we have cut as much as we can cut, $55,000. Textbooks. We were able to find some money left in our grants as well as in current accounts to pre-buy some of the textbooks that we would have purchased next year. That has allowed us to cut $72,000 from the budget for books for next year.
Any questions on that slide, anyone?
Supplies, paper, pencils. We have in previous years brought out to bid, we have bought and we have stored some papers. So this year, for instance, for this school, we don't have to buy any copy paper because we have it in storage. So altogether, in supplies, savings of $48,435. Contracted services, we've been able to reduce $54,684. We had put into the budget for the first time, the health insurance of bus drivers. It had never been in there before. It was always an expense that either came out of revolving account or in-kind. We have shifted it to the in-kind line, therefore it's a savings of $70,000 on the budget. One of the ways under staffing was we had approximately six new positions that we talked about wanting to have into the budget. So this cuts three and a half of those positions. So they're not current employees. We don't have to pay unemployment for them. So three and a half positions. At the elementary school, I was able to look at class size and in one particular grade where we had seven teachers, by cutting it back to five, the class size will be 20. Yes, would we like it to be less than 20? Yes. But I believe we can live with 20. In fact, on the other side of town, at the same grade level, that class size is 19. So they're in line with more than all. And two of those, those two positions are people who are retiring. Again, we don't have to pay any unemployment for them. There was a district-wide program that the two elementaries supported together. They had very small enrollment. That was the third position that was cut. Together, all of those comes out to $410,64. That's all of those personnel. And altogether, those two slides add up to $1,334,747 of cuts. And let me, I just need to say this. You have to understand, this was a long process where we went through every line item and looked where we could do the least harm to the education of the students. Now, would I rather have the $27 million budget? Absolutely. And that was the number that I recommended to you and asked you to vote. And if I thought that the town had the money, I would be here asking for it. But 213, I believe, will be the worst year as far as when we look at state aid for the town. And I do not believe the extra money is there. And I have, you know, like I said, this is a long process. It was not an easy process. And I'm not happy to be recommending this, but it is something that I am recommending because I believe it was a process that we can trust. And that ad hoc committee helped a lot by having everybody looking at this and talking about what a fair amount would be.
Barry, I think, first of all, I want to commend you and Mark Andrews because I know there was a big gap at the beginning that I think it shows working together when you, the two of you along with the ad hoc committee were able to close that gap. It's, everyone sitting up here naturally with like $30 million. We just, we just don't have this. I, I think that you guys should be commended for the work to get down to that number and come to an agreement. I just have a question. Do you look at all of the things that the town does and the school does that the potential to bundle some of those things for savings, be it supplies or any contracted services that can be combined to save additional dollars to avoid any cuts in personnel?
When we go out to bid, for instance, the natural gas bid, we go out with Barnstable County and the town went out with us. So we got the same rates as the whole county. Our paper bid was also Barnstable County. But oil that we now only use in one school is through Plymouth County. So we look for the best cooperative bid process for all of these kinds of supplies to save money. And if we know of one, we share with the town or the town lets us know. I know we are looking to talk with them about electricity and we think we can do a better job than with the current rates that we have.
Okay. And maybe if we reach out to the utilities on some of the potential savings of any conversion from oil to natural gas and savings that could come out of that, there's a lot of...
Absolutely, that's one of the things that I am looking to do.
Jeff?
I don't understand how shifting $70,000 from the LEA budget to in-kind, which is a direct subtraction from the LEA budget, can be $70,000 worth of savings. Can you explain how that actually saves us $70,000?
It was inappropriately put into the LEA budget. Never should have been there.
So it was essentially in twice?
It was in, it had never been in the budget before. They always just simply billed us and the revolving account paid for it. It was never a budgeted number.
Expense.
Or an expense. So...
Well, somebody paid it, right?
Yes. We wound up doing it through our revolving account. It has now been shifted to the same in-kind number where the town puts in the four and a half million dollars into the health trust.
But the, but the in-kind number is a negotiated number based upon the inputs that vary from year to year, correct?
But it does not affect the net school spending number that we have budgeted. So if that number goes up, it does not affect what we have to spend.
That's not... I, I love, I love the fact that it sounds like heads I win, tails you lose because I'll take that deal anytime the school committee can get it.
I would say heads we win and tails we win.
I think we're saying the same thing. But to, to the contrary, whatever number we, we have... Are you basically saying that the in-kind number is going to be what it's going to be and it doesn't matter?
That is correct.
Okay. What is the total number of students that you are using for FY '12 as a basis for the calculation of teacher to student ratios?
I'm using the number of children that are in the classes today. So when I look at a first grade class, I'm looking at the children sitting in kindergarten.
So any influx would impact that number and any attrition would impact that number?
That is correct. And the history is that averages up with the number coming in and the number leaving. Different times of year, it's up because more children commit at certain times of the year and children leave at certain times of the year. The only one that can't be predicted with any certainty is kindergarten because people don't register in a timely fashion, even though we temporize it. There are people who will show up two weeks... There are people who will show up two weeks before some starts to register their children. So there's some unknown factor.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions, Rachel? Good, Dr. Sylvia?
I don't have any questions per se, but I, I'll tell you, I got some comments and, um, you know, me.
You have the floor.
Um, I want to, because part of this is under my, um, chairmanship and I want to thank our two budget subcommittee members, Rhonda and Jeff, for the work that they've done in behalf of the committee. I think it, uh, it's certainly a labor of love and I really appreciate their hard work. But, um, you know, I, I can't speak, I'm not going to speak to any specific line items, but, um, in general, I'm, I'm not, I'm not happy with this budget at all. Uh, I'm just not happy with it. I, I just think we're not even covering inflation. We're not, and we're not even covering fuel costs. Uh, and I think for me, um, the problem is equity. And I can go right down the list in terms of lack of equity, whether it be, uh, uh, other, other towns, other school systems, um, and I, I, I think that I would be remiss if I didn't just point that out, that everybody at this table knows it. But I, I, I still have to say that, you know, we're looking at this budget now and we're, we're doing it and, um, we're still talking about cutting people. No matter how you slice the cake, we're still cutting people, whether we replace them or don't replace them, we're still cutting people. And I think that's an equity issue because I, I look around and I see jobs being created uh, o- other places in town. So, but we're cutting people. That's an equity issue for me. The reliance on chapter seventy, you, you gave us some graphing on chapter seventy. Chapter seventy's been flatlined for about the last ten years, basically. And so our reliance on chapter seventy is basically whatever it is last year, that's what we get this year, or the year before, or whatever the case may be. There's very little difference in chapter seventy. So we just, uh, we're relying on chapter seventy. Other communities are offsetting the flatline chapter seventy and right to the occasion. And we're at the bottom of the barrel on pure people's spending. Uh, I don't think there's, there's only one town anywhere near us that spends less than us and yet their total budget is more than us. I think that's an equity issue. Um, pure people's spending, I, I just mentioned, is another equity issue. Uh, I think there's a definite equity issue on what we spend and what we're, uh, percent of increases to vocational technical and, uh, education. And I'm committed to vocational technical education, but there is absolutely positively a lack of equity between, uh, Wareham Public Schools and the Vogts School. That's a lack of equity.
You wait until the, um, my report, I have a specific-
Okay, but I, I'm just saying, that's a lack of equity. And the other, the other thing is, I haven't heard one discussion anywhere, uh, from anybody about the possibility of a debt exclusion for capital items. I think that is just absolutely inappropriate. So unless the subcommittee, I'm not a member of the subcommittee, talked about it, but I, I think that-
Yeah, I talked, like, so you did talk about it. I believe it was brought up at a board of selectmen's meeting and then it was voted down.
I, I understand it was voted down at a board of selectmen's meeting. So I just think that looking at the capital needs of this town, uh, and I, I'm looking at the, the requests for capital items for all departments, not just the school department, that not to even consider, uh, and let the voters, let the voters, uh, vote or decide on a debt exclusion for capital items, in my opinion, is absolutely inappropriate. So I'm not gonna, I'm not going to comment on specific items or the bottom line, um, but no, I'm not happy with this budget at all. So I just thought I'd break that for the record.
Mr. Chairman, if I can?
Please do.
Um, I, I'm not going to go through the math on this again. I do have it on that other piece of paper, even though the numbers may be a little bit different. Um, it shows that there's a shortfall of four thirty-two. Um, the extra revenue from the town, um, was nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars. That is one-time revenue by and large because it's coming from the, uh, by giving a holiday to people who have healthcare premiums. So if you have healthcare for the town or the school system and you currently pay a premium every week, you would have a holiday from that premium. Um, it's been recommended that for four weeks of December and the first two weeks in January would be a healthcare premium holiday that would save the town a million and a half dollars approximately, and approximately a million of it would be coming to the school department for our budget.
Do you have to reiterate?
Um, other ways, yes?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I think it's important just to state again that it is one-time money. So next year, um, we're going to have a million dollar problem, um, that we're going to have to figure out.
I believe, and I will say that I am an optimist from, you know, I, the glass is always half-filled when I look at it, that, um, chapter seventy will grow next year. The state revenue will increase. They are looking at changing the funding formula that I hope will benefit Wareham. And I have already said clearly to, um, the town administrator that if that million dollars from the health trust was not available, then my expectation was that one-half of all tax revenue coming in and one-half of all new growth should be coming to the school system. Now, that was avoided this year with the money from the health trust. But, um, it, just for us to stay even, if we want to increase, and I will show it on the latest slide, which talks again about minimum net spending as well as where we currently spend, um, which is about one percent above. And as Dr. Sylvia said, um, we are behind most people in the state with that. And we have to get away from that. We have to stop thinking that minimum spending is enough for the education of our children. But I can't do that myself. That has to be a group of people that are committed to being out there saying that perhaps we need an override. And it's not a popular thing to say. We have people that are out of work. These are tough times. But as Dr. Sylvia said, when you stay even, you actually lose. The average growth without doing anything is about three percent, just, you know, the cost of doing business. So to make that up and you only go up one percent, you have to keep cutting. And we have been cutting and cutting and cutting. And, um, so we have some great faculty that do a great job with limited resources, but they could do a better job with better resources. And I know I'm preaching to the choir.
Well-
So, you know.
Just to follow up, one more thing maybe Mr. Chair has said. Um, at the last ad hoc committee meeting, it was brought up, you know, how can we, um, how can we continue these discussions instead of waiting until, um, February or March to all of a sudden say, we have this big problem? And then all of a sudden, there's finger pointing and all of that. And so, uh, the suggestion was made, um, to, um, recommend to the town administrator and to Dr. Rubenovich that we continue, um, the ad hoc group. Um, there are several issues that I think we can discuss and work through if the three committees continue to talk throughout the year. Um, each committee member could bring a specific issue. So say if the finance committee is, or the town administrator or the board of selectmen is struggling with something that is going on from a financial standpoint, um, in the schools, then let's come together and let's talk about it instead of finding out in the media or, um, really getting too far ahead of ourselves. Um, I thought, uh, we, we should definitely do that. And if other members, if it wants to be a rolling committee where there's other members that come on, that's fine, but, um, I do think it's a good idea if we do continue this in this group, um, to work out financial issues between the three boards.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, a good idea and hopefully that, uh, we'll continue that, especially when you're talking two years down the road. Two thousand and thirteen going to be very difficult, so, um, I hope we keep our representation current that we have on the committee on the ad hoc. Jeff?
I wish I could say it was just a question of half vo- half full or half empty glass, but I, I have to correct my colleague with respect to it, we have a million dollar problem. We in fact have a problem that's about, about twice that big. Because, yes, the town's dollars are one-time money, but virtually all with, nah, fifty thousand or so exceptions, but virtually all of the savings that our superintendent found were one-time savings as well, that won't be there a year from now. So in my mind, we've got a two-plus million dollar problem going into the next fiscal year. Having said all that, I think, uh, I think our superintendent and our town administrator deserve a lot of credit for doing what, uh, was absolutely essential during very difficult times. And yes, I'm not happy like Dr. Sylvia, but I am happy that we, uh, two, uh, two leaders got together, found a way to resolve a problem amicably, and we got through, it looks like we're going to get through another year.
I, I just want to, I don't want any misconceptions, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I'm very, I'm very, very pleased with the process. I'm pleased with the subcommittee at the school committee level. I'm pleased with the ad hoc committee and I'm certainly pleased with the efforts that you and Mr. Andrews have made in terms of putting this budget together so that we don't have to go into a town meeting, uh, with, with all balls in the air. So I'm very pleased about that. I was just speaking in generalities that I can't be impressed with a budget that doesn't service our kids. And every time we cut personnel, we're not servicing our kids. That was my point.
I'll take it. Were you done, Jeff?
Yes, thank you.
Continue.
Well, we have, um, a gap. And, um, I don't think we're at a point where we have to make decisions about how to fill that gap. But one strategy is to try and put some savings in negotiations. Um, another, you know, strategy, how do you cut, you know, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars? Well, lay off nine people at forty thousand dollars a piece. Easy math. Doesn't make it easy for the people that have to teach after the other nine people are gone. Um, or look at all extra in intramural sports as well as clubs and activities. And they will add up to approximately three hundred and sixty thousand as well. So, um, I just leave that on the table as something that we may have to discuss if we don't find a way to bridge that last gap.
Don't we have a timing problem? In the sense that it's, first of all, it's my understanding that town meeting, which starts on Monday, may immediately recommend to the body, have, have it recommended by the board of selectmen and the FinCom and perhaps the town moderator, that all financial articles be, um, suspended for, for several weeks at least. I've heard a date as late as May twenty-fifth. Secondly, um, as you know, we are just be, we have just begun the process of negotiating with our teachers association and I think our third meeting, uh, counting the first meeting, um, which just happened, isn't scheduled until the second week of June. So, and we have to notify teachers by June first if we're not going to renew their contract.
And in anticipation of-
Just lay everybody off.
-a deficit, I will make the notices, uh, and I will not ask for Vogts to make those notices.
So your plan is to execute absent other direction from this board, bullet number two, in anticipation that we might have to do it and hope that they, these good people would be available to be told at some future point, oops, I'm really sorry, we're lucky, we don't have to do this, are you still available? Is that essentially what we're saying?
We're essentially saying that you have to be fair with people and if there is a chance that they're not going to be here next year, they need to be notified as the family to do.
I think we're both saying the same thing.
Yeah, but you run a risk. You run a risk that they're going to go find another job.
I think I was-
For a system that pays better than ours.
I think I was saying exactly that.
Well, and through you, Mr. Chair, I think that you have that problem, but you also have just a general morale issue if you do something like that. I mean, it, it, it's ludicrous to, to have to do something like that when, if there are other ways to go about this and discussions that need to continue to happen. So we, we do whatever possible so we're not, um, considering number two.
Rachel?
And I, you're right, I understand that, but I think we have to, if there's any possibility of letting anybody go, we need to give them as early warning as possible. If we lose them, we lose them, but it's not fair to not give them that heads up, to give them a little bit of a running start, especially in this, this market. It's just-
No, and through you, Mr. Chair. I agree with you. Uh, what I'm saying is that this committee, um, needs to, you know, we know that we have this, this gap. We have to go back in there and dig to see, are there any other options besides these three? And we have to do it as soon as possible. Because what I'm saying is, I agree with you, if, if there's a possibility, then we have to do it, but are there other bullets that we can add on to this? Other ways that we might be able to cut so then we're not, um, we're not just looking at these three?
I would be happy to get together the superintendent's budget advisory group to look at that after Mr. Morris goes appointments and I, to look to see if there is another option.
I want, my comments were not by way of criticism, I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page in terms of what had to be done, by when.
Yep. Sorry, thank you. Continue.
Okay, why I support it, I think I've already said. Um, but the last bullet, when I put it on here, and I have given this to the town administrator, I have read it before, three board of selectmen, if money saved from reducing healthcare appropriations was not available, I would have requested one-half volume of revenue for the Wareham Public Schools. I'm saying that now in anticipation of next year. That is an expectation to begin with, before anybody budgets anything that says that there's no money because it's all been budgeted.
Jeff?
Just, just to be clear, um, that's less than half a million dollars.
That's a half a million dollars, that's right.
Okay, I didn't want anybody to think that it was some, you know, bountiful number. In fact, the health savings-
Was a million.
Was a million. So it's twice as much as would half of that revenue would have been. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, this, Mr. Chairman, um, if you want, I will leave this until after.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, that's fine.
So.
Is it in order to ask for a, uh, recommendation to approve a budget number?
Yes.
The total budget or separately?
Actually, we need three, um, we need the non-net, the net and the total as seen on this slide. It should be the one after, well, it's the same on both slides, I believe.
Three pages, two pages?
Yeah, it's either page two or page three. Both of them are the same. I mean, as far as the top number that we need.
And that's consistent with what's in the town administrator's budget?
I believe so, yes.
So why don't you go with the?
You want?
Meaning this number.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're going to entertain a motion for the net school spending-
So, we're gonna entertain a motion for the net school spending, 25,390,794? Twenty-five million, three hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. Entertain a motion.
No moves.
Second. Discussion, further discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pos?
I'll abstain.
Abstentions? Four zero zero one.
Under nine, yeah, that's us one.
Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the non-net school spending of 1,361,652 as presented in the budget report.
No moves.
Number second? Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Five zero zero?
And now for the total number. Total number's the 26,752,446.
Oh, okay. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the total budget for FY12 is 26,752,446 dollars.
No moves.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion done. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye, I know, I'm in favor. I'm in favor.
Five zero zero.
Only, because I don't want to go in divided.
Thank you. You want to save that for the end?
Yeah, I'll go through that at the end.
So, we're gonna go to reporter's chair?
To your report.
Okay, reporter to chair. Two things. First, I'll start off with, pass please, open. What I like to do this year is have superintendent's advisory committees, and I understand that Jeff would Cape Cod collaboration, I hope you would continue with those reports. I don't have that down on here. But, community relations, Rhonda's done a good job on that, so I want Rhonda and myself will be on community relations. Curriculum review, that's Dr. Sylvia and Rhonda for curriculum. Emergency planning, Rachel with your knowledge and your position in the, the fire department will be great, and I'll ask Mr. Swett to assist on that. And the policy review committee is a standing committee, I'm gonna ask Mr. Swett to chair that committee along with Dr. Sylvia. Any questions, any, if there are any issues with anyone, we could talk offline and maybe look at switching or... Jeff? Just a comment, I've been doing Cape Cod collaborative now for a couple of years. If anybody else has any interest in doing that, I'm more than happy to give up that position. You have no volunteers? It is yours, Mr. Swett. That was a serious offer, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, I know, that's what made it funny.
It came back four zero zero against, so...
They're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. Next is... By the way, I would point out that now that we have approved the transportation of bus drivers' children, there really isn't any more work to be done on the policy review committee. That's right, that issue comes up every year.
No, not this, that's done for a while.
Now, this is the start of what I think is gonna be a great working relationship. First, I want to give special thanks to colleague Rhonda, who came up with the thought that it would be a good idea for the members of the school committee and the Board of Selectmen to get together on occasion, sort of a informal, grab a cup of coffee, one-on-one meetings, and I thought it was a great idea. I personally have talked to every member of the Board of Selectmen, including naturally the chairman, Mr. Cruz, and I'm happy to say that they are all excited and on board with this. So, I would hope that going forward, we can reach out. Over here, we have the list that you have, and I'll have a copy for the press, actually has us teamed up with a member of the Board of Selectmen. My conversations with Mr. Cruz and other selectmen, we all feel it's a good idea that we try to make it a point to meet with all of them over the course of the year. I might have a cup of coffee next week with Mrs. Begley, a couple of weeks later with Mr. Cruz, and I would expect that when we come back to our school committee meetings, as well as they will do on the Board of Selectmen, is in a roundtable report out, yes, I met with the selectmen and we talked about some things. I did not put down the superintendent and the town administrator because I feel they do that now, being in the same building, and if there are any issues, Dr. Rabinevich goes up to see Mr. Andrews or vice versa. So, the, the actual program is called Together with a Number Two, because I think it all ties in line, there's two of us getting together, we have to work together. The bottom line is for the entire town of Wareham, the students and the taxpayers, everybody wants to see this, and I think everybody that was elected to this school committee and the Board of Selectmen know that we're all here to do what's best for Wareham. Any, any comments or any discussion on this from anyone?
I love the idea. I've already spoken with Kara, so we're just kind of bouncing around schedules, trying to get together for coffee sometimes, so, but it's a great, I think it's a great idea.
Comments, Jeff? Coincidentally, I have congratulated both Ellen and Begley and Mike Snyder on their election, and I have communicated with Ellen and extended my wishes that we can work together and if I can ever help her, I told her I would be happy to do so, and I hope she would feel the same way, and she has reciprocated those thoughts, so we're off to a good start. Great. Dr. Sylvia, comments?
Whatever you say, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to service you.
Wow. Rhonda? And I know, Rhonda, this was, so...
No, I just, I appreciate your leadership and Mr. Cruz's leadership in kicking this off, and I do think that it's, it's gonna be, there's gonna be some tough conversations, I think that, I hope, respectful debate, but it's all gonna be about doing the, in what's in the best interests of our kids and this community, and that's what I'm hoping that this does. So, I thank you for your leadership and Mr. Cruz's leadership for getting this off the ground.
Thank you. Let's see, do I have something else? At our next meeting, Dr. Sylvia and I will report on the NSBA, things that we attended. Dr. Rabinevich?
Thank you. The first item under my report is I'd like to talk a little bit about project contemporary competitiveness. In your package, you will have received an information that I took off of the website, gives a little history, the mission statement, and this is a, it has met at Bridgewater State College for the last 20 years. It has moved this year to Stone Hill College. Stone Hill College has been very good to work with the group. I attended, I serve on their Board of Directors from the school board, and so, this is a tuition-based program, gifted and talented students during the summer to have a college experience between their eighth and ninth grade years. They can go eighth grade or they can go ninth grade. And the participation has not been that great, but I put a little chart down on your, the newsletter, and it shows that in 2007, we had four students attend, 2008, we had five students, 2009, we had eight students, 2010, five students, and this year, there are four students that have been accepted and plan on going. So, I wanted you to know about the program, and if people have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer some, if I can.
Jeff? It, it looks like a great program. I'm disappointed we don't have more kids involved.
I'm sure it's the tuition.
Well, and that's exactly what I wanted to bring up. This is no, you know, over $2,000 is no small number...
Correct.
...for any family. Is there, is there any process by which a deserving child can have this defrayed in any manner? Are there scholarships that are given to this? I mean...
We, we support a half a scholarship.
Who's "we"?
The budget, the school department's budget. And other towns do similar, and there are on occasion, for instance, this year, Stone Hill College is offering for two full scholarships that I believe they're gonna break into four half scholarships. So, from the student body that has applied, if there is need, they will be able to apply for these scholarships.
I know this, we may not have tracked this, but is there any indication of the number of people who, students who have been accepted and then couldn't attend because of the money, or is it act as a filter on even who applies?
Unfortunately, it does act as a filter. But, there is a cheaper alternative that I did not include in this report, but will have it in next month's at Mass Maritime, that is run by Upper Cape, not by Upper Cape, I'm sorry.
Cape Cod Collaborative.
Cape Cod Collaborative.
Exactly.
And we tend to send many more students to that program, so I will have a report on that.
It's like half the cost, too.
Yes, exactly. But, we participate in both.
It's still a tough amount for families.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I know when, when my daughter was going, there was no scholarships or anything available to, to draw from. You just had to pay it.
Now, this is, these are, so, if you're, this is a summer program, so if you're a freshman or a sophomore today...
If you're an eighth grader today...
Oh!
Moving to grade nine, or you're a ninth, or a ninth grader moving to grade 10.
N, okay, so you...
Eighth to ninth, ninth to 10.
So, a ninth grader today could apply?
Yes.
But, is it already too late for that ninth grader to apply?
Yes, the, we've already gone through it, and it's the guidance departments at both the middle school and high school that handle these.
Because I've got some great kids on my tennis team.
I wouldn't rule it out due to the fact that if they don't have the numbers, they may be very willing to accommodate.
They, they have waiting lists.
They have waiting lists.
Oh, okay, all right.
They have a maximum of 500 students that they can house and take care of on campus, and there are waiting lists from participating districts. We have X number of slots available to us first, and then they go on a waiting list, and there are other districts that are not part of it that apply, and they have to wait until all the slots from district schools through first.
The only other comment I'd make is maybe this is something that the Foundation for Wareham Education could get involved in.
Absolutely.
It seems like a very worthwhile cause.
That and the ASLP, with the one at Mass Maritime would be...
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
Do it as a joint thing, it'd be phenomenal, the programs are great.
I will bring it up to them.
Just to follow up, there's a similar question that I had about, you know, tuition, and I, I think that this could be something also to look at the local big chain stores in this area, or, or some of the banks to sponsor something like this. I think that we should probably go after and do that. The question that I had is, how do you get the word out to, is it, is it just through guidance to students, or is this also communicated to parents that this opportunity is available?
It is predominantly through the guidance office, in newsletters, or good news things that come out of high school and so forth. The eighth grade one, one would hope that that was going home to parents, but that's something we can ask about and get some more information.
Can we find out, because I think that a letter, so, the other question that I had was, was about, you know, do we, I'm sure the guidance and the schools know what, who are the potential students that this could be available to? I think the suggestion that I'd like to make is that a formal, formal, formal letter from the principal goes out to each one of those parents, saying that, you know, this is, this is an opportunity for your child, you know, if you need more information about it, I'm happy to set up a meeting with you to discuss possibilities of how we might be able to get there. I mean, this is a great opportunity for students that are doing well in our school system, and we need to push it any way that we can. So, for next year, if we can maybe look at doing that, doing a little bit more push through the parents to get kids into this program, I'd like to see that.
Absolutely.
I know, I know with the ASLP, it did go through, it went through the school, and then, because you have to apply, but you also have to, you have to get recommendations from like your guidance counselors and stuff like that. So, it's actually a, quite a process that the kid has to go through to submit the paperwork, so...
Yeah, I mean, I think...
They usually are pretty good about getting that paper stuff out. I know that they were very good at, we did, we did the ASLP one, so it was, it was something that she wanted to do.
What did you do, I think, in the program?
Oh, it was phenomenal, amazing, absolutely amazing.
And they got to stay on campus, right?
They stayed, three weeks.
For like a Monday through Thursday?
They come home like on the weekends, stayed in the dorms at Mass Maritime.
And it was about $1,000?
About, a little over, it's a little more now. It's, I want to see, it's about 12, yeah. Geared on science and math.
It's a good program.
And it is absolutely amazing what they did with those kids, right? So, that's why I think that we should treat this as kind of an award, like your child, you know, is available to take part in this program, you know, no pressure, but this is a benefit and an honor for your child to be eligible for this kind of program.
Absolutely.
So, if we treat it kind of like that, maybe there might be more, more kids that want to get involved in it.
Doctor?
On April 13th, Mrs. Roteller and I and Mr. Murray from Wareham High School and Mr. Grossman, the Department Head of Guidance, attended a workshop, Pathways to College Readiness and College Success. The interesting thing about the event, from my perspective, is that a collaborative of all of the community college presidents, the president of Bridgewater State College and the president of UMass Dartmouth were present, and they had faculty members there, as well as secondary high schools. And they talked about the alignment of curriculum through the mass core. You've probably read, there's been a lot of talk about when children get to college, even community colleges, they need to take remedial courses. And what wasn't very well understood by a lot of people is the fact that our curriculum was based on the assessment, the MCAS test, and the Massachusetts curriculum standards. The college curriculum was not aligned with that, and they gave the Accuplacer test, and the Accuplacer tested one set of skills, and the MCAS tested another set of skills. So, students that were proficient or advanced might not do well on the Accuplacer, and therefore be told that they needed to take remedial classes. They finally, it took some of the money from Race to the Top that the state won to put all these people together and to come... and to come up with one curriculum so that the new state assessment that will be coming out, that is going to be across 20 different states, not just Massachusetts, will be used by the colleges as their placement, and the children will no longer have to take a separate Accuplacer. And I just sat there and said, gee, why hadn't people thought of this before? I mean, you know, I mean, but it's amazing, finally, that they're all going on to the same page. And, which I thought was a good trend. I just wish they had done it before. And...
They needed $125 million worth of stimulation.
One could say that.
Good point.
It's, it's interesting that they're just coming around to this now. But when I was taking courses at Cape Cod and, you know, retaking the algebra that I, I never got 20 years ago, never mind now. But, you know, you're sitting with kids that had just come out of the high school, and they were, they would talk about this. It was very clear to them what the problem was. It's amazing that these so-called professionals are doing at the statehouse level, so.
But they have it. And so that's, I think, decent that it's headed on the right thing.
Glad they caught up, glad they caught up.
Any questions on that particular item? Will we move on? All right. The last thing is I'm trying to, in your package, I have a few more slides up there that I will go to. But if I can ask you to pull out the two, and I don't, not sure that yours are in color, but did you have a package that had expenditures per pupil?
Yes.
And it has all of the districts that go to Upper Cape. And I think, well, I won't speak for Dr. Sylvia, Dr. Sylvia can speak for himself. But you can see that Upper Cape is spending close to $19,000 per pupil, where Wareham and Carver are about 11, 11.5 as the two lowest from all of the schools that call. But the second chart that shows other vocational schools shows that Upper Cape is kind of in the ballpark with Cape Cod Tech. Blue Hills actually outspends them by about $2,000 per student. And so they are in the ballpark. And I did call Superintendent Farr to have a conversation with him, and asked about why the big difference, you know, in per pupil spending, where ours is at 11.5 and theirs is at 19. And what he explained to me was about equipment, that they are, because they're trying to get students ready for the world of work. And, for instance, this year, they put in a new, one of these things that if you paint your car, it's the new thing with the spray and the, anyway, it's an expensive piece of equipment. And, you know, all the various things between computer repairs and culinary, material, material costs and equipment are greater, was his idea of why it's so much more expensive. I then, I will, I will show you the per pupil in a second up on the slide, but I wanted to pull out while we're among those papers, the evaluation form. This is the actual sheet that is used when Upper Cape is deciding which students to take. And for the public grades, you know, you can go from zero to five points depending on your grades. If you have an A average, it's worth five points. You know, a B average is four and so forth. Attendance. If you have one to three absences, you get 20 points. But if you have nine to 14 absences, you only get 10 points. And if you have over 15 absences, you get zero points. Behavior and conduct, also a 20-point scale. So zero references for discipline gets you 20 points. One to three detentions and one day of in-school suspension, you lose five points, you're down to 15, all the way down to, some others down to zero. Sending school recommendation is up to 10 points, from zero to 10. And the interview that the child has with somebody from Upper Cape that comes is also worth zero to 10. And these are the scoring sheets that they use when they accept or reject children who have applied. So...
So it seems like 90% of this evaluation comes from the school itself, meaning us.
Oh. Or from the efforts of the child when they are in school.
Right. Because the interview is only worth a maximum of 10 points.
Yes. I apologize that these last two slides are not in your package that I...
Mr. Chairman, are we continuing on the issue related to the Upper Cape?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I'll hold my question. Thank you.
I just need to find... So, on the first slide here, and I'll blow it up until we show, I was asked about the number of applicants. So, in the eighth grade in 2009, we had a class, grade eight class of 248 children. 114 of them applied, and 79 were accepted. So the percent accepted, so from the 114 to the 79, that was 69% of the children who applied were accepted that year. And 46% actually applied. So out of the 248, 46% of those students, or 114, applied. In 210, we had a larger class, 263, 95 applicants, 63 accepted, 66% were accepted from the 95 who applied. And this year, it is lower, and it's because only they, there is the first round of acceptances, and then children change their minds, even though they were accepted, they decide, I want to go to my district school. So there are openings left, and then they go through a second round of acceptances, which generally brings that number up. So at this point, as of this time, we have 51%. Mr. Swett, have I messed up in my notes?
No.
I see you with a calendar.
No, I was doing my own calculation, but the numbers looked, well, the numbers are what they are.
And on this particular slide, any questions? I thought that was a question that I wanted to answer. Dr. Sylvia.
This is all along the good, but that wasn't, wasn't my point the last time. So it's just not, not to my point.
Okay, well, I thought that was one of the...
Yeah, but, what, what, no, what I, what I want to know is, that, all right, I'll let you finish, and then I'll ask my question. But this wasn't my point. I think they do a great job with our kids.
Okay. This is, I believe, let me toggle between this, because I have to...
Barry, we do have these in our package.
All right. So somebody help me out. No, that one must be Upper Cape. What I wanted to point out was, the black line, dotted line, is required net school spending, and then the, the symbol of a diamond is the actual net school spending. So you can see how, before they cut us by 822,000, we were up above that by about 3%. Now we're probably back down to 1%, which would be like the year before, where we're just above it, or right, but we used to be just below it. Now we're just above it. And if we look at Upper Cape, their required net school spending is higher. And that's because it has to do with a formula of the five districts that go there, and it's, which I did not understand. But when the assessment comes through, there is a formula to figure out the, so somebody from Old Rochester, for instance, pays more to go to Upper Cape than our children do, because it's based on our net school spending number. I really did not realize that before I did this little bit of research. So they are above, they were like 3% above, and I think some of the numbers are in the, the package. But it wasn't as great a difference as I would have thought by just looking at the per pupil expenditure number that I showed you before, where they were at 19,000 and were 11.5. So, Dr. Sylvia?
Well, I mean, this is what I was saying. I mean, there's, there's an equity issue, even though there is, there is a significant difference between what is mandated and what is actually gotten in comparison to Wareham Public Schools. Wareham Public Schools, that gap is a lot narrower.
Yes.
So, that was my point. My point is that, you know, I think we all have to tighten the belt a little bit. And, and that, and it wasn't questioning whether or not Volk Tech education is, is, is good, because I, I was the Volk Tech guy. You know, that's not my point. They do a great job with our kids, okay? And they take, when they go the second round, a lot of our kids get in that need, need to get in. And I'm not, I'm not casting any aspersions at all on the staff or what's happening over Volk Tech. All I'm saying is there is an equity issue. And year after year after year after year, they come in, make their presentation to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen approve it, and it goes to town meeting. And the ironical part of it is, is that everyone that's in education knows that the Volk Tech lobby in Boston is very, very strong. Okay, that's number one. And number two is that in terms of the, of the equity in the Chapter 70 formula, I mean, you can just see the, how powerful that lobby is, because their net school spending is way above ours. And I understand the equipment thing and, and being up with the modern technology and so forth and so on. But there is definitely an equity issue. The third thing that, that we have no control over, as I think it requires in our, in our consortium, three districts to vote not to accept their budget proposal for, in fact, for it not to go forward the way it was presented. So therefore, the chances of them not getting whatever it is that they asked for is slim and nil. But what I'm saying is, sometimes you just gotta, gotta say, hey, look, you know, maybe it's about time you guys took a zero. Instead of coming in every year, year after year after year, it's going back to, as far back as I can remember, and I'm getting old, so I can't remember all that far back, they're coming in with, they're coming in with substantial increases. And that was all I'm saying, is that there is a lack of equity. And that was my main, my main concern with the budget, is when you look at, when you look at everything from, from an equity perspective, we're off kilter. We're off kilter. We're off kilter with, with towns in our region, and we're off kilter with the Volk schools. We're just, we're just off kilter. There is a tremendous equity gap between Wareham Public Schools and other places. And we can even talk, we can get further, we can micro, microscopically look at it again in terms of salaries and everything else. But the point is, there is an equity gap, and that's my concern. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Jeff.
This is my, I don't know, fifth year or so, being a member of the school committee over two different terms. This is in my top three issues that I find that make me angry. Like Dr. Sylvia, I don't think it has anything to do with the quality of the education that Upper Cape does.
Nope.
I think they serve children well. But this is patently unfair to children and parents. And let me explain why. We are absolutely living in a world of finite resources. So if you start with the fact that we have finite resources, every dollar that goes to point A is not available to, to go to point B and C and D and E everywhere else. They are spending over 70% more per children, per child, excuse me, than Wareham Public Schools. 70%. I would suggest that based on my observations, even if you accept the fact, and I can accept it as a, as a given, that the cost of educating a child in a vocational technical school is more expensive. I don't accept the fact that the percentage increases that they should be receiving on an annual basis should therefore also be higher. If they want to start with a higher base, then fine, let them start with a higher base, but then let that percentage increase be essentially the same as a regular public school. Anything else is just exacerbating the degree to which there is a disequity, which Dr. Sylvia has already mentioned. But believe it or not, that's not my biggest complaint. It's actually worse than a charter school in the following sense. If Upper Cape was a charter school, then people would apply to it, and if they were oversubscribed, there would be a lottery. And then everybody would have an equal chance to get in. But this isn't even that good. You don't get an equal chance to get into Upper Cape. There is some screening. Could you show us your screening evaluation for Wareham Public Schools, Dr. Rabinevich? I've never seen it. I've never seen this document that I would think the school committee might be very interested in seeing. How exactly do you score the children that come to you and ask to be educated?
We take everyone who comes through the door.
Oh, no, you can't be serious. You actually take, you actually don't reject anybody?
That's correct.
Do you know that a charter school can't reject anybody either, except if they're oversubscribed and then they have to have a lottery? Where does it say that they could spend 70% more money in a world of finite resources and reject children? Because, oh, because they don't have enough recommendations, because their attendance, because their behavior, because their grades, et cetera, et cetera, at a time when, you know, maybe they're not a model child at age, what? You know, they start taking kids when they're 13, 14?
Eight, 14, 12, 13, yes.
Gee, I know, I don't think I was a model child at 12 and 13 either. I am outraged. I, I think it's an absolute disgrace that this exists in the state of Massachusetts, and feel free to quote me. I'm finished.
Thank you. We'll wait for Dr. Rabinevich to return.
I just have one comment, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Sure?
Yes?
Okay. The comment that you made, the question too, they are basically saying that it is due to equipment cost, the reason why that the per pupil spending has to be higher. And the only thing that I would say to that, I know that's probably one of the factors, but the thing is, is that when it comes to equipment, especially around technology, we're not preparing our children for the job force. So you take a look at what is required of children in this workforce. You have to be up on the latest software. It's a requirement in most every single job application that I see. They put as a requirement different software, computers, you name it, that there is, in many of the jobs out there, a requirement around equipment. And we're not, that's not even a question when it comes to public education, when it comes to the equipment that's needed to educate our children in the day and age that we are right now. So I would just say that, you know, that there's time, it's time to challenge that mentality when it comes to pure people spending, when it's compared to Volk schools, compared to regular schools, because we need the equipment just as much. Thanks.
Doctor?
I wasn't going to say anything about this, this sweat opened the door. And I just, I, I can't, I, I've got to say, you know, the whole, I was a tech ed guy in Wareham, all right? And I was really proud of what we did on a small level compared to Upper Cape. So I believe in technical, vocational and technical education. I really do. I believe that there are those kids that really flourish over at Upper Cape. I really do. I've known so many of them to really do well. I've had members of my family go through Upper Cape and are doing very, very well. That's not the point. The point is, on this equity issue, just, just take a, I, I, I just got my packet, because I just got back from, from the West, and I got my packet, and I saw this evaluation form. form that Dr. Rabinevich was mentioning. And, you know, I had seen it before, obviously being Principal at Sandwich, and Sandwich is part of the Consortium. But, you know, we got these kids that are in public education, let's, let's just say Wareham High School or Wareham Middle School, and they haven't found their niche, and, and they're getting, you know, fidgety, and they may get in trouble. They're not, they're not A number one citizens, but they could flourish at Upper Cape. I look at this form, and if they're suspended from school one day during the year, their point value gets reduced by half of that category. Suspended one day, one time, their point value is reduced by half in that category. And, 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 and it's those kinds of things that, to me, scream that it, there, there isn't equity, that it is not equitable in terms of public institutions and public schools. So, yes, I understand that they can't take everyone, they have to be selective and so forth and so on, but I would think that they, uh, would, they would spend a little bit more time selecting students based on, uh, their skills, aptitudes, and intentions, uh, rather than, um, putting so much weight on their discipline or their attendance. I mean, maybe a kid doesn't go to Wareham High School, Wareham Middle School because we're not, we're not doing it for him. You know, we've, we've, we've basically taken every Volk and Ed, uh, uh, technical program out of the schools here at our level because of budgeting. So maybe these kids could really flourish over at Upper Cape. And maybe that's why they're not coming to school. I, I think that there was a lot of if, ands, uh, and variables in terms of selecting students to go to Upper Cape. And again, I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying that Upper Cape is doing a bad job. All I'm saying is that it reaches a point where there has to be a certain degree of equity because we're both public schools. And this just struck me back. One day suspended, one day, one day, their point value gets reduced in half on the attendant, on the, uh, application. That just, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, it's a...
But it's their school, they can run anywhere they want.
Right, it's a pretty generic, uh, application.
Right.
As I said, out of a hundred possible points, only, Upper Cape is only accounting for ten. Ten of them, and, and I looked at the same thing. It just breaks it down for points for attendance, but nowhere does it say excused or unexcused absence. Uh, if a kid is out ten days with the flu, then the chances of being accepted to Upper Cape are pretty slim because there isn't anything that...
And I'm sure they take...
...accounts for an excused absence.
And I'm sure they talk to the schools and the guidance departments and the administration of the sending schools, because I had many conversations, um, with then Principal Farr when he was over at the, uh, Upper Cape. And we, we, there's give and take, and, and, you know, we talk about kids that really need it. Uh, but you know what? And I, and they, they can, they can put whatever, um, admissions criteria they want. Their school. All I'm saying is, it reaches a point where there is a lack of equity.
It's not their school.
It's a public school.
Thank you.
That's exactly right. It is a public school. You're absolutely right. But they have a right to run their public school the way they see fit. But, um, I just think that there, there, there reaches a point where we say, you know, you, you just can't be doing this and going, going along the merry way without being questioned. And it just seems that they're never questioned. It just goes along, you know, the, the Board of Selectmen will approve, it'll go to town meeting, it'll get approved, and we'll go our merry way. Because, you know, no one wants to say that they're not doing a good job for our kids because we know they are. So, who wants to, who wants to bring up that issue at town meeting?
Dr. Rabinevich? Um, under any other business? I, I'm done with my report.
Get your board.
Okay, good. Any other business?
I just have one item, Mr. Chair.
And I also have one item.
Go ahead, Doctor.
Okay. Um, if I may, I'm gonna, one, two. I apologize, this came to me, um, actually today, so it's within the forty-eight hours. Um, and I bring it to you for information value, not for a vote. Not that I wanna say that I don't need your vote, but I'm not asking for your vote because it is money that is, well, I'll go through it. The letter is from Anna to myself, and it's about asking to purchase, immediate purchase, of a nine-wheelchair and four-seat vehicle.
Wow.
Um, we currently, um, use Wailing City because we did not have a vehicle large enough, um, to transport these nine-wheelchair students, uh, to the Schwartz Center in Dartmouth. Um, and these are medically fragile children, there are, um, need for, um, assistance on this vehicle, there is a nurse on this vehicle. But they are going up in their price, and they wanna charge us a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars annually. Now, that's two hundred and ten days a year. It's not a hundred and eighty day, they are an extended year program. Um, and in your package, you should see a piece of paper that kinda looks like this, which is, um, my costing out of the cost. And so, um, under item fuel, um, twenty-two dollars a day or four thousand six hundred and twenty for two hundred and ten days. Um, the driver's salary per day, then I have the yearly. To assistance, what they make per day and then for the year. The nurse, that totals, we can do this for two hundred and seventy-two dollars a day. They will be charging us seven hundred and fifty dollars a day. Seven hundred and fifty dollars a day times two hundred and ten days is one hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Um, given the, um, that it only, I can do this, if I had the vehicle, for fifty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. I can save the first year one hundred thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. The cost of the bus is ninety-seven thousand three hundred and forty dollars. It is a brand-new, um, FY-12, um, full bus, but it is outfitted for nine wheelchairs and four chairs, which means as soon as we get the vehicle, we can take the work back and we can begin the savings. The first year, we pay off the bus, um, and where our savings is three thousand dollars. The next year after the bus is paid for, that's a hundred thousand dollar savings for the district, which should, um, take care of any increases, um, that come along the way in transportation. And we have ninety, the majority of the money, whether it's all of it, um, I believe, is in the acquisition of equipment. This is the last year that we have that money in the accounts, and it is approximately ninety-four thousand dollars. We'll find the other three thousand out of the revolving account, and we will be able to buy the bus. It does not have to go out to bid because it, it's an emergency special ed. That is an exception in thirty-B. And, um, I have a vendor already, and, uh, they're just waiting for me to give them the okay. And in your package, you will see the requisition, um, you'll see the, uh, proposal to Jeff Tetro, and the specifications, for those of you who wanna get into the nitty-gritty of this. Um, so, as I said, I'm open for questions, but I wanted to bring it to your attention so that you would be aware of it. Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Jeff?
Do you wanna go first?
Go ahead.
I thought you rose your, raise your hand.
I did, but go ahead.
Okay. Um, where is repair and maintenance and depreciation in the analysis?
It isn't there.
Okay, so...
Because on a first-year, brand-new bus, I don't expect there to be any maintenance necessary, except for the regular, um, doing the oil change and rotating the tires and such.
How many miles per year would you expect to put on the bus?
We're going from here to Dartmouth and back twice a day. Is it six, it's a thirty miles to Dartmouth?
At least, sounds...
I think it's a little under, but...
Sounds like a hundred miles a day anyway.
At least.
Excuse me? At least?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hundred, so a hundred plus miles a day, and this is two hundred times?
Two hundred and ten days.
One way, should be actually. Right, so sixty miles a day.
No, 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 no.
Down and back, down and back.
You have to send the bus, they drop the kids off, they come back, and then it goes back to get them.
Yep.
Okay, so, and then they're doing it two, so that's, that's, call it, call it, uh, twenty thousand, twenty thousand miles a year. Yes?
I'd have to see the numbers.
I'm just adding two zeros to, to the two hundred, I'm just...
Okay.
Rough numbers, right?
Yep.
Twenty thousand miles a year. Um, when do you, when do, how soon is a bus used up?
Cape Cod Collaborative...
In our case, it's never, it appears, but...
Cape Cod Collaborative said to me that they had a vehicle like this for cheap money, but it had two hundred thousand miles on it.
Yeah. All right, let's, let's give it...
Does that answer your point?
Let's give it two hundred thousand miles. Uh, that's, so that's ten years. All, by the way, I'm not suggesting this is a bad idea, but I think just, we need to keep in mind that, yeah, maybe the first year, the repair and maintenance is minimal, but there's some cost of bringing it in, getting it, getting it to pass inspection, et cetera. It sounds, sounds like if we could easily have about ten thousand dollars a year in depreciation and some additional amount in repair and maintenance, because I assume this is...
Well, if you wanna depreciate it correctly, it's seven years is what you figure for a bus, so...
I, I understand, but I'm a fan of doing things re- in real life as compared to...
So, ten, ten would be better.
Um, either way, it's a savings, it's just not quite as big as this analysis suggests.
It, but it's a slam dunk, I think, any way you look at it.
Yes.
From my opinion, rather than sending a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars out every year.
I, I, I find it remarkable that at one fifty-seven, they don't think somebody's gonna say, no, we'll do it ourselves. I mean, that's just mind-boggling that they can, their business plan thinks that they're gonna get anybody to bite at a hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
What happened is the bus that they had that was doing it was involved in an accident, and now they have two vehicles going, and they don't wanna shell out the money to buy another vehicle, so I think by, they've increased it enough so that we'll take it back, I think, is really what's happening.
Good. Take it back.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Have you, continue, my lap at my, my question. Have you thought about going to capital planning and asking for the money for this bus?
That was Jeff laughing.
Um, I've been to capital planning. They have our plan to change all of our vehicles, and I hope it will be presented as part of the total capital plan at the April Town meeting. There is no funding for that plan at this time, and that's why, um, the ad hoc, I'm hoping, will prevail upon all the committees to support, um, a debt exclusion for the capital needs, the immediate capital needs of this town, which would, you know, whether it's five years, five new buses a year for the school department, or whether it's fifteen at one time and then, you know, a couple of years later, fifteen more, we need capital. There's no doubt about it.
Right, because it's just an emergency purchase, so I didn't know if even the ask was made.
This is all, we, this is all, we have the money in our budget. That is specifically, can only be used for the acquisition of vehicles.
Right, I understand, but looking at the twenty-twelve budget, we're still looking at a four hundred thousand dollar gap, or three hundred and nine.
I can't, one thing means nothing, as, as you saw, when I gave back two hundred and seventy-three thousand last year, there was not a mention of it in free cash. In fact, it seemed to disappear.
I just, I, I, I would like us, though, to always put in a formal request to the town in these items. It's okay for, I understand if the money is not at the town, they have every right to say no, but at least we're asking. Um, the only other question that I had on here is that, um, have we, have we looked at other bidders?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the best, and what about not a, a two hundred thousand dollar, twelve-year-old bus, but, you know, are there slightly used, um, where we can get it a little bit cheaper?
It is in our best interest to do the work ourselves.
No, 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 I meant the actual purchase of the bus.
Yeah, we did have another, um, but it didn't have everything that we needed on it. And the idea is that we need it sooner rather than later because they're gonna, you know, hold us hostage, they're gonna raise the rates on us immediately.
You never know what you're getting by used either.
Well, if, if it was, you know, young, maybe.
Were you, you done on? Rachel?
I, I just wanted to, to say something, um, about Jeff, what Jeff was talking about. Um, they're raising the rates now, and I understand, you know, the depreciation, but next year, they're just gonna charge us more. So it'll, it'll just keep going up, so I, I just think it, it, in, we need to kinda take care of ourselves. I think that it's kinda, time and time again, it proves that by taking care of ourselves, we're more fiscally responsible than, than anybody else, so...
Mr. Chairman, this is, unless the School Committee came, um...
Okay, Dr. Sylvia's.
Is this something that has to be done right away? I mean, is this a, is this an emergency situation that we have over in right now? Do we need immediate action on this?
I don't understand why we wouldn't take advantage because it has been researched.
Um, okay, so, so this wasn't just for our information?
Well, yes, it was. It was. I'm not asking for a vote.
You're not?
I'm not asking for a vote.
Okay.
But, but they said the bus was in an accident, so we don't have the transportation. Now we're using two vehicles.
No, no, they're, they're sending two, like, currently. So they're still doing it.
Oh, with the added fees.
But, um, okay, and, and I, I understand what Rhonda wants to do, and, you know, I think full disclosure and, and going to the town is fine, but sometimes if you have an emergency situ- situation, you've gotta act. And I don't know if this would be even a School Committee issue. Uh, this, isn't this an administrative issue?
Yes, but, but I brought it...
Okay.
Just so that everybody is aware of what I'm doing. So there's no hidden agenda.
Right, this, this does not require a vote from this committee that's part of your day-to-day operations.
Correct.
Jeff?
New subject, okay.
Uh, yeah, we're fine with this. Any other questions for Dr. Rabinevich?
Go ahead, Jeff.
I just wanna, um, ask you, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to attach the resolution that we passed the last meeting to the resolution form contained in this document and send it onto MASC? Or would you like to do that? I'll be happy to do it for you if you'd like me to do it.
That would be great if you would take care of that.
Okay.
Thank you. Other business?
Um...
I'm just going around.
All right, go ahead.
Rhonda?
No, just to add on to what Jeff said regarding this, that was just given out to us, um, going to the Day on the Hill, um, for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, um, we were talking and, um, to our seasoned member, members on the board, um, if any one of you would, um, like to be nominated, uh, for, uh, the, uh, the officers of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, I'd be happy to nominate you. So if anyone would like to raise their hand, I would be happy to nominate you for that.
I did notice Dr. Sylvia's hand go up, so...
I did too.
Yeah. Everybody else saw that, correct?
You were the one.
Thank you. Dr. Sylvia?
Um, I made an inquiry last week, um, about, uh, the athletic report. Do you know if that's gonna be put on the agenda anytime soon?
Yes, I talked to Dr. Rabinevich, and we're gonna wait for the complete report, um, if you'd like to speak to that, Doc.
The, um, we were looking to have it done, um, once the season was over. Um, we've got, coming before us, as you're well aware, with the, uh, school improvement plans, two principals a night with improvement plans, so, um, we thought we'd ask for the report, um, right at the end of that process.
Okay, well, I just find it interesting that we haven't gotten any report, and it was supposed to be good, it was supposed to be done, and, and it, it's not a policy, but certainly it was a practice...
Yes.
Uh, to have it done at the end of every season. I'm, I'm just concerned that that wasn't followed through on. Um, the second thing is, um, are we gonna get any kind of a report on the five-year plan? The five-year study that was supposedly taking place in the Guidance Office?
Um, I, it... Um, I, it, the goal was that by the end of this year, we would have a plan.
Okay.
And I have a meeting that you are welcome to attend, in fact, I welcome your attendance, if I can just now put this to month and see it. On the, I believe it's the twenty-fifth, yes, Monday, the twenty-fifth, at ten o'clock, if you're available.
I have Dr.'s appointment.
All right, I've got Scott and Steve Grossman, and I have asked the Claire Smith to attend to see if we can do something with the Alumni Association as well, as part of that, but I'll keep you with the loop after we get the plan together.
I, I'll be reporting on it next, next meeting.
You went to a thing on it?
I did, and there is a couple of companies out there that do this, and they, and they track the kids when they enter grade, I guess it's grade nine, and they, they keep in touch with them all the way through the high school, and then they do a five-year follow-up study after that, and it's all part, I'm sure, I'm sure that there's a cost involved, but they have the expertise, they have the instruments, they know exactly how to do it, and we, we would be able also to, to give valuable input into designing the instrument as to exactly how the instrument would be germane to our particular needs or our particular hypothesis, if we have any. I, I thought it would be something that might be of interest, that's why I bring it up now.
Could you drop that by?
Yeah, I will.
So that I can use it at that meeting?
I will.
That's what I gave you today. Oh, that was one of the ones that you gave me, right? I don't know if Cliff has another one.
The-
This one with the key.
But I, I think that there's two, there are two burning issues in my head, not to prolong the meeting, but I think they have to be taken into consideration when you have this meeting. And the burning issues in my head are, we, we concentrate so much on the percent of, percent of graduates going on to post-secondary education, two-year schools, four-year schools, state schools, private schools, et cetera. We've got all that data. I said, but what, what we don't have is data, follow-up data, how many of them are still in school after a year? If those are not in school after a year, why are they not in school? Was it academic, was it financial? We need to know this, this is very, very important information, particularly in, in this town. I want to know of the eighty-some percent of students that go into post-secondary education, how many are there a year later? How many are there two years later? How many finally graduate? What are the reasons, if there, what are the reasons for dropout or not graduating? You know, so I, I think there are a lot of questions that could be put on an instrument that would be very valuable data for us to look at, because I'm primarily being, now being appointed chairman of the Curriculum Advisory Committee, I'd be very, very curious on, on if there's any connection between curriculum and what we're, we're giving our kids in terms of offerings or electives or whatever the case may be, and this, and their potential success opposed to secondary education. So I, I, it's been something that I, I've had, I've been pushing far for several years now, and before my term is over, I'd like to see it come to fruition, and I'd like to see a five-year study. We know, we know the kids that graduated five years ago. If we sent out an instrument to, to their addresses five years ago, I bet you you could probably reach maybe sixty, sixty-five percent of them. If you could get forty, forty-five percent of them to return the instrument, that's a good return rate, you can make some assumptions based on that return rate. So I, I don't think it's a difficult thing, I think we have their addresses, at least their addresses are five years ago, and I just don't understand why this has taken so long to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica, any, any other business?
Um, no.
Jeff?
All set, thank you.
Rachel? No other business, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So.
I get it.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks, good night.
Not bad, thirteen past nine.
Unheard of.
Not very early.
It wasn't a right adj-